What was the ding that made you feel like, what's happening?
Okay, it's six o'clock. Call the order of the October two thousand twenty-one regular scheduled town council meeting. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Hey, I want you to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robert Jones.
I'm here.
Marissa Skaggs.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Steve Denny.
Here.
Chip Bab.
Here.
Okay, we have the court. Okay, approval of the minutes of September ninth and the twenty-eighth meetings. Holy, he's got copies and should have had time to read all of them. Need a motion for approval or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes for September ninth and the twenty-eighth.
I'll second that.
Jeff, do I have to have two votes?
No, not the first.
Okay, okay. Okay, I have a motion in a second for the approval of the minutes for September the ninth and the twenty-eighth. Roll call, please.
Steve Denny.
Yes.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Yes.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Court Treasurers' report.
Alrighty. Got the month ending September the thirtieth and the total claims in the general fund, which is in good shape, six hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars. Karen from my office also passed out some information on what we can expect for two thousand twenty-two as far as tax money coming in. Any questions?
More than we can issue.
Yes, more than we got this year. Did you say? Yes. By sixty-four thousand five hundred prior to the general fund, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, you know what percentage that would be? I would think last year was like four percent. It sticks in my mind.
And this year it's four point three.
Four point three.
That's the ratio.
Doesn't lie much for inflation, does it? And social security is going to be about six percent.
She's good, but not that good, right?
That's right.
Really?
Uh, I think you've all looked at the voucher register. I don't think I have anything else. I think that pretty well sums it up.
Can we have a motion to accept the Court Treasurers' report?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the Court Treasurers' report. Roll call, please.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Board is approved. Fire Department. Chief Mr. Quigons.
No, I'm actually online today.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have nothing to report other than my report that's there. I'm on the road traveling back from Ohio, so I will entertain any questions that you guys might have for us at the Fire Department.
Any questions for the chief? Keep driving, chief. Chief Farquhar.
That's funny that he's listening. I had a whole plan to take over his report. Tell you how many hours they napped last month and the chili they made.
Ah, ah, ah.
Go ahead, no trouble.
All right, Pendleton Police Department monthly report. Total dispatched incidents for the month was one thousand sixty-seven. You'll see in your report this month, we found a, we have a new software that we're able to generate some bar graphs, and it also shows, which I thought was interesting, the location of the different crashes that occur each month. So at the end of the year, we can actually show you where all the crashes occurred throughout the year. And I think it shows, does it show rest or calls, incident calls? We can do that as well, but I thought the crash diagrams were pretty interesting. Shows our trouble areas.
And it's a bar chart, isn't it?
And it's a bar chart. I couldn't let the Fire Department one up me, so. We've been working with the Gaiamet State Street Construction crews. They've been excellent. A lot of people asked why we were sitting out west of town, and it's purely for oversized trucks, oversized corn combine heads, anything that's too big to make it through would cause total disruption. So that's why we've been sitting out west and sending them back. And we've gotten pretty good at realizing which ones fit and which ones don't. Unfortunately, we learned that by the signs that got torn out. Park Fest music event went well. Weather was perfect. I'll see Coco's here tonight, but it was a great event. It really was. It was a good time. I don't see anybody that did not enjoy themselves, so I'd like to see that one continue. That was good. Pendleton bicentennial, just wanted to brag on Denise. Did a great job at the bicentennial, and of course, my fiancee singing was awesome. But that was a cool event just for the town. Two hundred years, that's huge, and I was glad to be part of that. And then we've also installed the Wi-Fi cradle equipment, which gives our car a Wi-Fi signal, and it helps with our in-car computer and all that fancy stuff. So Captain Trailer observed all that and kept an eye on the installs, and we now have that equipment in the car, and it's cutting-edge compared to other agencies in the county, and other agencies are already trying to duplicate what we did and get it with theirs. So to brag on our department again, we have that. And that is it.
Any questions, comments for the police chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Gus.
Counsel. The major part of the report that had to do with security assessment. There's a group here working together to be able to make the determination, assessment of security. It started out as the court. But now we're moving actually to town hall, and then also the outside utilities and our maintenance storage things, too. It's all becoming encompassing. Continue to get, gather information as we go. I'm trying to think of Kayla, Mr. Reski.
Chief. And then Tracy.
Tracy from there, also just wanted to sit down and go through this. What I sent to you on the addendum to it is five pages of what I call a generalization that has been put out by the court system relative to give you an idea of what's out there cost-wise, because what we can tell here, it's going to be, that's going to be the big situation. The assessment is pretty accurate. In fact, if someone wanted to take him out of the tent and do some harm here to town hall or court, it could be easily done. So we're looking towards that, and also protecting the people outside there when they meet with the public also. So that could all become the... Scott?
No, we're still getting close for if we need to do some minor modifications to the town hall here to improve some things. So once that comes in, I'll get with you.
There's several who come in. It's interesting. The one manager that was here had done one for the Supreme Court here in Indiana, and he's kind of telling me the expense of that. They didn't worry about spending money to protect themselves.
Any questions or comments for the judge? Thanks, Judge. Aaron.
Good evening. I really don't have much to add other than what's on my report. Maybe just a shameless plug for our event coming up on the twenty-third up at the North Forty. Family-friendly event with a haunted barn, pumpkin patch, drunk-or-treating from four to eight. So if you guys are around, stop by. Kalanis will be there making K burgers, so it should be a good time.
It's October twenty-third.
Yes.
Four day.
Four to eight, yes.
Where at again?
At the North Forty, in the barn and that area.
As soon as you say K burgers, everybody forgets everything else.
Right, yeah. They're like, okay, we'll be there.
Get them while they're on.
You know our currency.
You guys have anything for me?
Any questions or comments for Aaron? Thank you.
The corner project that you're doing along with Scott for the new brick stamped?
Yes.
Are we putting the benches back, too?
Yes.
People sit there.
Yes, we will be putting the benches back. We're still waiting on a planning list from the company that's doing the playground so that we can mesh those two areas together and just tie it all in. So once we get that, we'll develop a planning plan. I'll pass that along to you guys and make sure you see that. And then we're hoping to have that list in the next week or so, and then hopefully be able to get some planning still in the ground yet this year.
It's looking really nice there.
They got it all back though today, so the fence is down, so.
Looks great. Looks very good.
Any comments or questions for Aaron?
Yeah, it's a good piece of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Town Manager.
Look, Kayla and Scott, same time. Her family's course in harvest food right now, so she's not here. The new permits are down just a little bit, but we're way up almost five times as much as last year, so it doesn't bother me. We have a little dip this month. I think it's, once again, due to supplies. And then, I'm in Sager Farms, got the, they have the dewatering project going on, so it doesn't surprise me that we have a little bit of a dip. If you can go to my slides. So just some highlights real quick. I'll just go ahead and start talking while she's looking for it. So Water Street, all that's left on that is a punch list. Mostly is some striping for the street crosswalks and some signs. As you can see, they've done, oh, can't hardly read that again. In fact, I can't read it. I'll have to do this off of memory. Franklin Street, they've got the water line in, and just the other day it passed the test for the pressure. So that's good. I was a little nervous that there was one place where we were going to have trouble. It was going to be on that. We may have the pavements in worse condition. We were hoping to use some of it of the existing pavement, so there may be an extra expense coming, but I don't know what that is yet.
Explain that first when you say.
Yeah, so that, you know, that's a, that's a very old road, Franklin Street. And so what we found is a lot of the stones that should be underneath the pavement is just pit run, which is, you know, the cheap stuff, and it's very thin from state to high. Was, the asphalt was incredibly thin. And it's a little bit thicker as we go from high up to Taylor Street. So we, instead of doing patching and then paving over the patching, we may have to take everything out and put better stuff in and have a bigger pavement. So that, that's been discouraging. See what's next. I can't read.
New Water Department employees.
Oh, yeah, we're going to have two new Water Department employees. They're going to start here before your next town council meeting. They're spread out when they start about a week. Next is.
Stormwater jetting.
Stormwater jetting. We did that again, preparation for the winter and.
Christmas decorations.
Christmas decorations, okay, so.
Thanks, Marissa.
The young eyes.
Nobody else can read it, right? So we've got Christmas decorations that we're going to have both on state and Pendleton Avenue, the downtown area. They're really, really nice. It was picked out by a committee from the Pendleton Business Association, and then it's part of the mission of the electric company, so purchase of that comes out of their funds. And they'll start putting that up in time for Christmas in Pendleton, which is on the.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. So I'm really excited. I hope, I hope they.
Not tomorrow, November.
November thirteenth, right. So I want to put that up. We've got them, and we've even tested it to make sure it'll fit on those. And then the atta boys, oh, good, that are techs. Okay, one thing the billing department does really well, but I think they ought to get an atta boy for is Tracy will go in and look for reports where somebody may have a leak. So if she sees all of a sudden somebody's usage is like this, and then it peaks, and then it goes on for a couple days, she will call them up and say, hey, look, you may have a problem. You know, a lot of times in the summer, somebody leaves their hose on, not that I've never done that, but. So what do you want? They do a good job, and I think people really appreciate the fact they do it.
They do.
Yeah. The street department, they continue to do a lot of good projects around town. They've really increased their capability. I don't know if you know this, but the electric department has done about three hundred thousand dollars with the work and installation on the new development. And then we get reimbursed for that. That is not their normal stuff. This is, it'll continue to be normal as more and more development comes in, but they've done a really good job of upping their game for that. And then the water department.
Craig, I'll throw the bone out there for Craig. Craig Switzer, the supervisor, Craig, the little electric department, really does a tremendous job of tracking and keeping track of purchases and where we use them. And then we passed a ordinance this year where that building, if we buy a thousand dollars worth of something, there's a fifteen percent surcharge to the developer. So for his time and everything that we're doing, and it's worked out great, but it's caused Craig. He's got a whiteboard down there, and he knows everything that's going on, tracks it tremendously for Scott.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. They brought in quite a bit of money.
Yes.
Based on the surcharge, and then now we're charging for their time and their vehicles, especially the specialized equipment that's very expensive. And then water department, it's just two of them, and they're doing a great job of keeping everything going while we're, they're waiting for their reinforcements and two more employees. With that, anyone have any questions for them?
I'd want to take it. I want to add one more thing. The cemetery. I get more compliments on our cemetery in probably a year ago January, I remember telling some people that were in charge, I do not want to get in trouble over the cemetery. When I say trouble, not being mowed, weeds, not being weed-eated, so forth, because we've all seen it. It was a disaster about two years ago. And Aaron and Cookie have done a tremendous job. You drive down Pendleton Avenue, that cemetery looks good every day, and they're out there working. I just want, I just want to throw that out there.
One other thing on that same line, a lot of people don't realize, Aaron and Cookie both will coordinate with Tracy and meet a family out there and walk them and show them where the grave sites are they can buy and let them pick, and they do a really good job of coordinating that.
They are good.
They're good people.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions for Town Manager? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to old business. Second reading of ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen, impact review board. We've done this last month. It's where we have to have a licensed real estate broker and a licensed engineer from Indiana, plus a certified public accountant on the impact review board. And I'll be the first to say that myself has not got a CPA yet, but we're still going to pass this like we did, or vote to pass this like we did last month without the CPA. If you know somebody that's a CPA, they do not have to live in town, that would do this, let me know, okay? It's, it don't pay anything, and it's strictly a volunteer thing, and really, I can't see, and I may be wrong, whether there'd be a lot of meetings for review, because it's very, it's spelled out very explicit. If you build a house, here's what it's going to cost, and that's your impact fee. It's an upfront fee and so forth. So with that being said, can I have a motion to, for second reading on ordinance twenty-one nineteen, impact review board?
I'd move to approve that.
I have a motion.
Second.
And Steve does a second. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Steve Denny. Chip Bab.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved now. Thank you. Okay, Lisa Floyd, the whole group, your turn.
Well, there are three of us here tonight. Beth Erskine is not with us, but she's here in spirit. Thank you for giving us a little bit of your time on the agenda tonight. I am Carol Hannah, and Coco Bill. To give you a recap of Park Fest two thousand twenty-one, we started our project with three goals. To allow visitors and residents the opportunity to attend a concert in the park that was family-friendly, while allowing those attendees the latitude to bring their own food and adult beverages if they wanted to, to support the park, and by extension, the whole community, to break even on expenses versus income. And we think our goals were met. Over five hundred adults were in attendance, along with lots of children. We estimate between one hundred and two hundred under the age of ten were there. They got in free. There were absolutely no incidents of disorderly or rude behavior. We were actually blown away by the enthusiasm and the excitement of the people that were there. And if you were there, you saw the extent that people went to decorate their picnic area. It was crazy, amazing. One hundred percent of the ticket sales went directly to the park, just a couple of dollars short of five thousand seven hundred dollars. Thanks to the generosity of our sponsors, we covered all of our expenses, and the leftover money is currently housed with the community foundation, while we talk with our stakeholders about the best use of the funds so we can assure support of the park and this event going forward. We did have one other unspoken goal, and that was for perfect weather.
You did a good job.
We've shared this recap with the park board and friends of Falls Park and expressed our thanks for their support and collaboration. We want to thank you, town employees and leaders, who supported our idea from day one with permit approvals, logistical help, electrical upgrades, and lots of "that's a great idea" affirmations every step of the way. And we're excited for two thousand twenty-two.
Good. Thanks, Lisa. Good job. Great job.
Very good.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five, amending the UDO. Scott, do you want to run through that?
Yeah, so. Okay, so the planning commission met, and they had some amendments as they digested our UDO and look at it in detail. And on the ordinance, it's in the color proportion here, and these are the things that they passed and agreed to. I don't recommend going into detail. A lot, most of it was, it was all technical, trust me on that. We had a debate over certain issues. Oh, like if on a setback, should it be ten versus fifteen V in a certain situation? They found some errors in the UDO. It only comes, the type of errors you only really find out until you start using your ordinance in detail. So with that, I recommend, and some of the stuff was deferred till later. Some of it is, they recommend that they pass the line items, but then they're going to look at it every quarter, at least for coming forward, and look at it again. A lot of them, I've got to give hats off to Kyle Ighorn. He did a wonderful job. You know, he does this for a living. He's a civil engineer that has to use various UDOs throughout all the different, you know, counties in town that stay here. But he knows what's good, he knows what's bad, practical, and just like.
This probably will not be the only amendment that we'll have to make to the UDO, and it shouldn't be the only one.
No, it should, it's designed to keep updating.
Everybody remembers the UDO document is two hundred and forty-six pages long. It's a two-year in the making, and things are going to come up, and we're going to have to make changes. It goes to the planning department, and it comes to us, so. Won't see it every month, but don't be surprised if more of them don't come through. It's like Scott said, this here is more or less on the setbacks on the UDO. Any questions for Scott on this? If not, can I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five, which is amending the UDO?
I'll make a motion that we accept it.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-five is carried. Do we have to have two readings?
So we're good on this. The zoning ordinance is the first reading since the planning commission, so it is adopted.
Okay. The next one is ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-seven, which is ARPA grant program plan. And I think I'm going to give that to Jeff, and he's the one that's got to make the planning portion and has done it, so.
If you're looking for a lot of lawyer language and not a lot of substance, ordinance, ordinance number twenty-one twenty-seven is a good example of that. But it's intentionally that way because you want to keep your, as you, we've talked about before, this money that you have the opportunity to spend. uh, this money that you have the opportunity to spend on behalf of the town, it's, it's pretty open on how you could spend it. And so this, this plan is specifically drafted to be as general as possible, because the money doesn't have to be committed until the end of 2024 and exhausted at the end of 2026. And so if there are projects down the line, who knows what they'll be in two or three years from now? So that we, we can always go back and hit about any of these slots in this plan. If we forgot something, we can go back and amend the plan itself. So what you have in front of you are various things that specifically the federal government has allowed this money to be spent on. This doesn't obligate you to do any of this stuff. When you, when the time comes, you want to spend the money, which is, I understand there's going to be a proposal in a couple of weeks for you at your special meeting. You have to make an appropriation, have a public hearing, just like you do on a normal appropriation. So there'll be plenty of notice for you guys and for the public to have comment on that. This is the plan that will eventually get turned into the federal government and the state government that says this is how we're, we're planning on using the money. And then each appropriation will be sent a later report. But what this does is it's kind of the constitution on how we're going to spend the money. This constitution, like the one in Washington, can be amended to however we want. But that, all you have in front of you here is an ordinance to allow us to do the appropriations at a later date.
Like Jeff said, it's a lot of lawyer talk, but it's, what, eight-page?
Yeah.
Eight-page, 10-page.
County signature page.
Yeah, on it. And it's, it really don't tell you how you can spend the money, or how we're going to spend the money. It just gives you the general rules on appropriating the money. And the federal government's made it very clear, and they, they've changed the rules, believe me, from day one till last Friday, uh, what you can do and what you can't do. So this plan can change again. I hate to say it that way, but it's, is that the best way to say it?
Yeah, it's just like the UDO, you just don't make changes to it.
Just guidelines.
Yep.
Yeah. I think I've sent everybody on the council a proposal of, right now, that, just so everybody knows, there's 493,425 dollars and some change. 88 cents, I think it is, or 44 cents.
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So that's half of the total dollars. And now that half, uh, I, I've given to the council approximately 253,845 dollars worth of projects or appropriations that we may do. You know, uh, some of the money will be used. Don't know the number, and like Jeff says, we don't have to spend the money actually until December 31st of 2026. Have to have it appropriated by December 31st of 2024. So we've got plenty of time, but we have all the stormwater projects going on, and we'll use some of this money, don't have any idea how much, on stormwater. Just because there's just so much money, we can't do everything on stormwater that's not been done for the last 30 years. But we're trying. Is there any questions on this, uh, ARPA grant?
I think, I think it looks good. Is there any, Jeff, very possible to say the state has revenue as well, county has revenue as well? Would this allow for, say, there were some venture that's working with the county or with the state? It would be a benefit to both that you can participate in a joint venture, joint cost expenditure with the state, for example?
Yes, sir. That would be fine. Absolutely. So we, we can enter a partnership with another government. Absolutely.
Okay. Actually, there might be some.
What would that be? What's an example of that?
Well, try to, you know, get in stormwater, get in the.
It's 80% 20, so 20% can come out of this.
You're working with.
That's a 50-50 match, I'm sorry. Yeah, 50. 50-50, let's say, what is it?
75.5.
25.75. I was close, I was bracketing that. So our 25% can come out of this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you can leverage against other.
Leverage somebody else. Well, like, can you give stormwater, you know, goes beyond the town limits? Or stormwater scenario that might benefit everybody that you could participate with?
Any questions on, or comments on ordinance 21-27? If not, I'd entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Ordinance 21-27.
That would require unanimous consent to adopt it on the first night it's been introduced. So you would have to go through that again two more times. You have to go through, determine if there's unanimous consent to pass it the same night it's been introduced, and then vote again to see if it passes. Yep. To suspend the rules, that's a long-winded way of saying that.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I second that.
I have a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 21-27. And I have a second. Roll call.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa, did you change your mind?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Chip Bab.
Aye. Okay, suspend the rules now. May I have a motion to approve the second reading for ordinance 21-27, ARPA Grant Plan?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Bob and Steve have a motion and a second.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Ordinance 21-27 is carried. Okay. Last thing on here is the 2022 budget hearing. Can you throw some numbers at us? Total numbers?
What kind of numbers do you like? Would you like the estimated tax revenue?
Yes.
Okay. So the property tax cap credit on civil max levy is 1,576,857. So 1,576,857. The tax credit count is 274,060. So our estimated tax revenue for 2022 will be 1,302,798. That, you guys have a graph right there that tells you what is for the general, the MBH, the park, and the community. That then is broken down into the budget, which I think you each have a budget. You have the general budget, then you also have the water, the electric, and the tip area budget.
Okay, now, tonight, we're actually voting on the general fund budget, even though all the budgets are in that. Is that correct? Is that the right way to say it, Jeff?
Tonight, we're introducing it only, and having a public hearing to take public comment on it. And then we will adopt it on the 27th.
Okay. That's good. So.
Yeah, we could suspend the rules, or not suspend the rules, suspend the public meeting and open the public hearing on, on the budget tonight.
Okay.
Tonight, yes. Then we don't have to do that.
At this point, we will open the public hearing on the 2022 budget. Is there any comments in here or online? We got anybody online?
No comment. There's persons online, I can't confirm.
Okay, Sutton.
I will, um, say that I work mostly with the Department of Local Government Financing. I mean, for one, first year doing this. Um, second, I've had some, um, I've got some issues, or my husband's been sick, so I needed a lot of help with this. Um, I've had a lot of input from the department heads, and they were very good and very helpful with me about trying to get their budget taken care of. I don't think there was anything on there that was out of line. We are, um, our budget exceeds our revenue by 68,000. What is, but that takes in increases in the fire department and their, their wages, because you are picking up more runs because of angles. Um, and there's just a few, I mean, the police, we're adding another person, the electric, we're adding, um, some people there. So things are, you know, between extra expenditures, because things are more expensive. Our, um, insurance, our liability insurance from this year alone went up about 50,000. So we made an increase for next year. It, it's hard to budget when you're not really sure what you're going to get, or what you're going to spend. And you start this in June, so it's, it's a long process. It's an estimate.
Let me, let me make a comment to what Karen just said. On the fire department, because the runs are going up, and they get paid per run. Not much, but they do, the volunteers do. We've got a little bit of income now from Ingalls and a little bit of income from Green Township that we've never had before. So that offsets some of it. But as Karen is saying, with the number of runs, and even with the police department, I, I like the way you're keeping track now, dispatch calls and so forth. I mean, when you're talking, uh, 1,067 last month. Is that true, Chief?
Those are, those are incidents that the officers either relay to dispatch they're doing, or dispatch sends them on, so.
That's a lot of calls. It's a lot of calls. If, if you would, Linda, this, uh, tomorrow.
That's Karen.
Karen, I'm sorry. I keep doing that. She's used to it. Let's, let's make sure each one of the council members get a copy of this, please.
It's on the.
We have.
Okay, I don't have my iPad with me. Okay.
I think they have a copy of everything.
Everything, yeah.
We have.
Does any, any of the council members have a question or a comment about the budget? I'm, I'm going to go ahead and.
Do we have anybody on Zoom or anywhere? No? Okay, just making sure.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing and open up our meeting again. One, one comment I want to make is, the salary ordinance, even though it's part of this budget, is a separate ordinance that usually we don't do till November. But the way we're looking at, and the council has this, I guess, I didn't know that, I'm sorry, but I didn't know that, is there'll be raises in there for 2022. And the raises will be 10, currently, it's up to the council, okay? We'll vote on this, is 10% for the police department and 5% for town and full-time employees. So now, everybody can call me tomorrow and complain, or do whatever you want to.
Or transfer to the police department.
Or transfer to the police department. Okay, so on October the 27th, we'll, I, I guess, go into more detail on, on this. Don't really need to, everybody's got the numbers. I personally like, Karen knows this, I like the appropriations report. Because I call it a manager's report. You got a budget, and the appropriation says you start out with a thousand dollars. And at the end of January of, of the year, you, you're allowed, or your budget is 8.33% of that thousand dollars. You can go to the right-hand column, and you ought to be at 71.2%. And you know where you're at on your budget all the time. And the, the only thing that, that doesn't always hold true is on, as an example, is the, uh, fire hydrant rental. That's the example I always use, because it's paid twice a year. So it goes from zero expenditure to 50% in January. But it don't change then till July, and it goes to zero for the rest of the year. So any questions from anybody? Council or, or any of you guys? If there's questions from the council between now and October 27th, you can get ahold of me, you can get ahold of Karen. I probably won't know the answers, and I'll go to Karen. So you're more than welcome to go to Karen and get the answers. I, I just want to be honest about it.
Question on the, similar short 68,000 on the revenue on that for '22. Does that include if we do the raises, talk 10% for PPD and 5% for town employees? Is that part of that mixture?
Okay.
Is it? Do you feel confident on the, on the shortfall in revenue that we can make that up in the year of the?
I think we can make something, Jeff. Now, it's, it was straight across the board, and it'll, it'll, it'll work.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I would think with the growth, I would think, yeah, we'd be optimistic. But I'm disappointed the state's only allowing for a 4% increase. When you look at your inflationary factory, that seems like not an adequate figure when you, when you look at the inflation rate that we're experiencing and probably going to go forward with that. I know you can appeal a levy. I don't know how that works, we've never done that, that I know of.
Do what?
Appeal your levy. You can do that. I'm not saying that's appropriate now, but.
That time's coming. Maybe not this year, but it's going to come.
I can see that, yeah. If they don't build in inflation on that, I would think, going to have to look at that at some point.
There is a cushion in there.
Explain that. Explain what you're saying.
So if this is a proposed budget, so, um, you put in there where the max that you make, you'll need, as time goes on, like first out some salaries, there's a cushion in there. And then when you actually pass the ordinance, it'll probably shrink a little bit. Well, I know, I think there's, in a lot of the employees, there's a, there's a little bit of a cushion for their revenues. Could be an example. Then the reality, if we get closer to the end of the year, then it'll come down a little bit. Especially we just switched insurance.
It's amazing when you look at the numbers, what the town spends on insurance. And your department heads really have no control of that.
Very little.
So it, it really affects the budget to the negative side starting out.
30,000 for, per employee that has, that takes the family. 30,000. So it's a lot over there.
Yes. Yeah, it's a lot of money. Lot of money. Okay, so October the 27th is when we will vote on the budget. Like I said, if you've got any questions, get ahold of me and/or Karen or Willie. And Willie and I will be going to Karen to get the answer for you. Any other public comments? Anybody online? Okay, I got one. Go ahead.
I got one thing to say, if I can.
Sure.
And I want to step away from being clerk treasurer for a second, okay? Willie Bowles, I live in 1217. I would like to have the board's blessing to put on a parade on November the 11th for our veterans. I'm tired of, we have opening day baseball, we have a Halloween parade, we have a Christmas parade, but we don't have a Veterans Day parade. I'll be glad to oversee it and try to put it together. I'd just like to have the blessing of the board.
I'm all for it.
I'm good to that, definitely. Hundred percent.
Willie, do you, do you want a member of the board to help?
If they want to, anyone can help. You know, I like to put together, if we can. If they want to, anyone can help. You know, like, put together, if we, you know...
Bob, Bob will help you on that.
If we get all these crazy people with their golf carts to try something better than you can't walk. Yeah.
That's a great idea. A great idea.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Is that legal?
Say, Chad?
Yeah.
I think we have a council meeting on November 11th. I wanna change, I think.
Willie, November 11th is a council meeting.
We'll have a parade at noon.
Have what?
Have it at noon, the parade.
Okay, whatever. We'll just, that'll be part of the planning, but I think November 11th. Okay, one more thing I wanna do. Lucas, if you would, come up to the podium, please. Lucas and the chief didn't know I was gonna do this. Lucas is our captain of our police force. He's one of the newer guys, three years? Be three years. Lucas was chosen Police Officer of the Year by the Madison County Prosecutor's Office and awarded that. And that's, that's a hell of an accomplishment. And I, I just wanted to say that in front of the town and let it be in there, but great job.
Thank you.
I'm glad we got you on our team.
Thank you.
Thank you. If nothing else, the town council meeting is adjourned.
Yes, sir.